All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular meeting of the West Covina Planning Commission for February 25, 2020. Call the meeting order at 7:02. And we will begin the meeting with, by rising for a moment of silent prayer meditation, which will be immediately followed by the pledge of allegiance, so please rise and we'll do that.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Anderson, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Holtz.
Here.
Commissioner Hing, Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Haques, and Chairman Redholtz.
Here. We know that Commissioner Haques is not going to be here tonight, and we are awaiting the arrival of Commissioner Hing, but we do have a quorum, so we will move on. Next item is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting of February 11, 2020. Any commissioners have any changes to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes will be approved as presented. Next item is oral communications. This is when any member of the public can address the commission on non-agenda items. I have no cards for... Yes, city manager.
Meeting commissioner's staff and public, Dave Carmini, city manager. I just wanted to have you mark your calendars, if you would please, for a state-of-the-city event. We're going to hold it at Hurst Ranch this year in the evening, 6:30 PM on April the 30th. We're going to talk about our major city initiatives and ways that our community and residents can reap the benefits of those, so I hope you're able to attend. April 30th at 6:30. Thank you.
At Hurst Ranch. Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Anyone else wish to address the commission on a non-agenda item? Nope? Okay. Then we shall move on to the agenda. We have a public hearing tonight, which is item number one. This is a tentative parcel map, number 82784, an administrative use permit, number 19-31, and administrative use permit, number 20-03, a categorical exemption. The applicant is Oliver Rowan. The location is 2445 Rio Verde Drive. Mr. Anderson, who will be presenting the staff reports?
Our planning assistant, Renee Aguilar, will be presenting that report.
Thank you.
Good evening, chairman and fellow planning commissioners. Tonight I will be presenting tentative parcel map number 82784 and administrative use permit 1931 and 2003. There we go. Okay. So a tentative parcel map is the subdivision of land consisting of four or less contiguous parcels under the same ownership. Each single family residence requires an administrative use permit because both proposed homes are two-story and exceed the maximum unit size. The project is categorically exempt through CEQA, Sections 15303, Class 1 for new constructions. That would be applicable to the two new two-story houses being built, and of course, the subdivision, Section 15315, Class 15, minor land divisions. The project consists of a 36,600-square-foot lot at the terminus of the Rio Verde Drive cul-de-sac, and currently, the lot is vacant in its own single-family residential. Just for reference, the parcel is located north of the Cortez Park and the Christ Lutheran School. So with the pointer, the red, I'm sorry, the green shaded area is the Cortez Park. And to the right, as you can see, is the elementary school. Notices of public hearing were mailed out to 24 owners and occupants of the properties located within 300 feet of the subject site. No letters or calls of concern. In addition, staff did recommend that the property owner host a community meeting welcoming all the surrounding neighbors, which would be potentially affected by the construction of these new homes, and that was done January 15th. The meeting was held at Cortez Senior Park, and the meeting was attended by two neighbors, planning division staff, and two of our planning commissioners. Parcel A is proposed to be 19,383 square feet with 120 feet wide and 152 feet in depth. Parcel B is proposed to be a 17,223-square-foot lot with 108 feet wide and 142 feet in depth. And if you look to your right, the minimum required lot size is 9,450 square feet with a minimum of 74 feet wide and 110 feet in depth. Here is a colored site plan illustrating the proposed houses situated. As you can see, the two houses will share a driveway. Parcel A will have 42 feet of street frontage, and Parcel B will have 20 feet of street frontage. The two houses will each have a detached three-car garage. And just for reference again, Lot A is the parcel to the right side here, and Parcel B is the, with the house to the left, and the more so of a salmon-colored roof. Okay, so a little bit about the two proposed homes. Again, we went over the lot size, the habitable area. Both homes will be about 4,000 square feet with, as I mentioned, the detached three-car garage at 642 square feet, front entry porch. Parcel A will have 139. Parcel B will have a 60-square-foot entry porch. Floor area ratio, 21% for Parcel A, Parcel B, 23%, and both will have lot coverage of 18%.
Renee, let me just interrupt you for a moment to acknowledge the fact that she and Commissioner Hing has arrived to join us at 7:08 PM. Thank you. Please continue.
Planning staff conducted a neighborhood survey and assessed 20 homes within the surrounding area. We found that the average lot size is 10,783 square feet and the average floor area with 1,665 square feet and an average of 2.9 bedrooms. The proposed house on Parcel A would be 4,142-square-foot home on a 19,000-square-foot lot, and Parcel B, 4,000-square-foot on a 17,000-square-foot lot. As proposed, as you can see, Parcel A will have a 21% floor area ratio, and Parcel B will have a 23% floor area ratio. This is what the existing site looks like right now from a bird's-eye view. This is a street view, and I'd like to mention that that oak tree at the very front, big one right there, that one will remain. It will not be destroyed, torn down, none of that. Maybe cleaned up a little bit. The next eight slides will be the elevations and two slides for an illustration of the floor plan, so just go through these pretty quickly. The two proposed houses will exhibit a Mediterranean architectural style and will be similar in exterior and interior. The proposed house on Parcel A will feature large windows, large exterior windows, low-pitched tower roof and stone veneer. So this is the front elevation behind me. This is a side elevation. Let me take a step back. That is the rear elevation with a proposed deck. The proposed deck will be 342 square feet above a covered patio, and I'd like to note that the deck would be facing the Cortez Park and the Christ Lutheran School and preschool. Here is the side elevation. And here is the floor plan. So the floor plan will feature, for the first floor, for Parcel A, an entry porch, foyer, three bedrooms, three bathrooms, kitchen, great room, and the patio cover. The second floor will feature three bedrooms, three bathrooms, a gym room, laundry room, and an elevated deck. And here is Parcel B. Similar architectural style, just slightly different color. This is the front elevation, the rear elevation. Now, the house on Parcel B will not have an elevated deck, just due to privacy reasons, and really, there's not much of a view based on how the house is being proposed. Side elevation, and first floor plan, similar, identical to Parcel A, entry porch, foyer, two bedrooms, three bathrooms, half bathroom, kitchen, and a great room, three bedrooms, three bathrooms, and a laundry room. And with that being said, I'll wrap this up, and planning staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt tentative parcel map number 82784 and administrative use permits 1931, 2003, and subcommittee for design review numbers 19-31 and 20-06. That concludes my presentation. I would like to mention that the applicant is here. It's my understanding that applicant doesn't sound fluent in English, so the project coordinator would be here to translate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Renee. Any questions of staff? Yes, Commissioner Holtz.
Who's responsible for the continuation of the street and going right around the houses there? Is that city responsibility?
Let me pull up the site plan real quick. Are you talking about the...
Rio Verde Drive.
Okay. So that end of the cul-de-sac there?
Well, this street where the big oak tree is, and then that street going in by the houses.
Public Works? Oh, the driveway? Is that what you're referring to?
All right. So, point to the driveway. So that's the public street, and Rio Verde is, the street is complete.
Right.
So they're proposing a private driveway.
Okay, so it's up to the applicant then?
Correct. And it would be a shared driveway, so...
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and call the applicant to come forward. Mr. Rowan?
Yes.
Come on up to the microphone here, sir.
My name is Oliver Rowan. I'm a structural engineer myself, and at this project, I represent my client as a project leader for the proposed project that was introduced by Mr. Aguilar, and we're here to answer any questions that you have, or any other people has any questions. I'm here to answer, yeah.
Just maybe tell us a little bit how you came up with, you know, the design and, you know, kind of give us a little background on that?
Oh, yeah, because my client obtained this lot to, basically, to put a, to a nice house for his family, and so, and would think that the size of the lot and everything is which is good for the, based on the city requirements. And then we proposed the subdivision of this lot into two good-sized parcel and putting the house that he wants. And he has been always want to invest in West Covina, so, and he wants to move into the city, and then that's his, in a way, his dream project.
So both homes are for family occupancy?
Yeah, as far as I know, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Holtz.
Do you know who owned that lot before? He bought the lot, I'm assuming?
Yeah, from private, I do not know who was the owner.
Do we know? Was that the school?
I don't know if it was suburban or Valencia Heights, but they owned it for 30, 40 years.
Okay, so it's not the school?
It was not the school or the church?
No.
Okay, I guess we're right. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Kennedy?
You know, I've met you before. I love the project. I really do. How, you know, my concern is it's a natural runoff, and would you explain to us, what you explained to me that night, how you're going to address the situation?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, basically, there are drainage along the property, along the property line next to the school. Renee, if I can go back to that. If I can go back to that site, probably is better, okay. Okay, you can see along this property line, which is adjacent to the elementary school, there's a drainage along this line. So the garage is actually set back eight feet, more than what's required to allow the drainage along the property line. And then same with this, on this side, there's a existing drainage along this line also, and across this driveway, and then along this property line, and then toward this triangular area where we have the, how do you say that? The runoff, the, by the, we have civil engineers and doing closely with the city for the drainage. It has been considered in the design.
If you're only concerned.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? No other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rowan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have no cards on this item. Does anyone here wish to speak in favor of this project? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the project? Seeing none, I will close the public testimony portion, and we will move on to commission discussion.
Yeah, I, the only thing I've got against it is I will have to find a new place to walk my dog. No, it's, I think it's a great project. I'm really impressed with the interior design with the staircases and all that, and it's going to make good use of that, that just sat there for years, that property, and I think it's going to be a very classy when you get done with it. So I'm very much in favor of the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Hing, any comments? No? Okay. Let me just make a couple of comments on it. First off, I want to thank the applicant and Mr. Rowan for doing what you're supposed to do, doing the right thing, and contacting the neighbors that would be impacted by this project. You know, this is, it's a pretty big project, and they did that, and, you know, you can't, it's out of their control as to how and whether or not people reply and respond, okay? I mean, you had two neighbors that were there that night, I think, and I was there, and some staff was there, and Commissioner Kennedy was there, and that was it. You know, the food was quite good, and it was nice. And, you know, if those neighbors who, actually, none of them are here, even the ones that were okay with it, so, you know, I mean, that's the way it goes. But this is one of those instances where you have two-story homes being built, the neighborhood is pretty much single-story, but where these homes are situated, in this cul-de-sac, they don't really, they don't really, you know, stand out, as opposed to if they were just like right in line with the other houses. They're at the back of this, at this cul-de-sac. And as Commissioner Holtz said, and Commissioner Kennedy has alluded, that lot has been vacant and looking the way it looks for, you know, decades. So to replace that with two really nice-looking homes that are going to be obviously, you know, well-maintained, and it'll definitely be an addition, a positive addition to not only that neighborhood, but to the city. So, you know, needless to say, I would be in support of it, Commissioner Kennedy. Do you have any comments or...
I'm good.
Okay, so let's go ahead and have the resolution numbers, please.
All right, so we have three resolutions. We have the tentative parcel map, which would be 20-6024. We have administrative use permit 1931, which would be 20-6025, and we have administrative use permit 2003, which would be 20-6026.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
To approve?
Absolutely.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Nope? Let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Chairman Redholtz?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for coming to West Covina, and we look forward to seeing those two homes in our midst in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item number two, which is a conditional use permit, number 20-01, a categorical exemption. The applicant is Plaza West Covina LP, represented by Allison Mack at 112 Plaza Drive, Suite 2066. Mr. Anderson, may we have the staff report? And who will be presenting it?
Our planning assistant, Camelia Martinez, will be presenting that report.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. It's working? Okay. This might seem familiar to you because it was brought before you back in August of 2019. It is being back, brought before you because they are changing locations. This is conditional use permit 2001 for 112 Plaza Drive, Suite 2066. What?
You gotta click on the screen.
I do?
Click over here.
The new unit will be 2,403 square feet. It will be located on the second floor, kind of above Valairs, across from H&amp;M's Men's This is the, I took some photos today of the unit. It looks pretty vacant right now, but once they move in, it will look good. The layout of, or the floor plan of the unit will be flexible according to clients' needs. The standard hours of operation can range from 8:00 AM till 11:00 PM. The parking actually did go down a little bit because the unit's size decreased about 1,000 square feet, and so they are compliant with their parking. Staff recommends that the planning commissions adopts the resolution of conditional use permit 2001. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff by the commission? Seeing none, we'll open up the public testimony portion. Ms. Mack, come on up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Okay.
Did you want me to...
There's not a lot to say.
Yeah, it's pretty much the, what we had presented previously, and it was so successful that a tenant actually wants the space that it's currently in, so it was a matter of relocating it to the second level. We've had a lot of popularity. We've had a wedding in there. We've had birthday parties, business meetings, trainings, all sorts of things going on.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
That location that you want to go to now?
Yes.
Which was Beauty World, and they have moved. That is prime, that's a prime location.
Well, the reason they chose that location is because it's close to an entrance, and with the way this rental is, we want to have easy access for the participants to come in and use the space.
Okay, so my question is kind of, if you get a tenant for that space, are going to be back here in two months for another one, or?
We only know, what we know now, that it could be changes like that in the future.
Okay. And I have another question.
Sure.
You have, there's another space in the mall, Live 360?
Live 360.
Live 360. What is, what is the difference between that and this?
Sure. Live 360 is different community groups coming out to use the space. We've had different meetings in there where it's not something that we charge. It's more of a community-based program from different learning things, where people don't have to pay to go and attend that. Many art exhibits, definitely community-based, where this is exclusive, where they pay per hour to use the space, and it's usually more, as I mentioned before, trainings or something specific. It's not open to the public.
Okay, so that's, that's the difference right there. Okay. And that's also in a potential tenant space, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that could, but that never came to us for any approvals or anything like that, right? That Live 360? I don't think so. Was that something that is exempt from that, or what category does that fall under?
Well, it's a pop quiz on me, I guess, but I think that it's a little bit different because it's an open space, so it's more like an exhibit space. We could talk about that, but it, you know, it's clearly different, where people are renting this, and it's close to the public, and that's more just open. I guess it doesn't have any walls on it, the front?
It does have a glass door front, but it's...
But it's always open.
For the public, for different uses.
So that would be the difference.
Okay. And this is kind of not on this, but a few months ago, we had a massage use that we approved in the mall?
A few months ago, or...
Back before Christmas.
Yeah, it was quite some time ago that's been open for some time.
And then that never happened, I don't think.
We do have one on the upper level, which they went through the process. They've been open for a while. It's on the second level in the Macy's Wing.
Okay, I think that was different. Okay.
Isn't that the massage one out in the open? Or is it in a...
It's in an inline space.
It is?
But it's not closed off for the point of having like individual rooms or anything like that. It's open concept.
Okay, yeah, I remember that. Okay. Any other questions on this item? No? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Anyone else in the public wish to comment on this item, for or against? Seeing none, we will move on to commission discussion. Or let's just have the resolution number.
I've got a resolution number 20-6027.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Holtz, seconded by Kennedy. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, 4-0. Thank you, Allison. We look forward to another grand opening event there? Just keep them coming. We're ready to go. All right, now, we have non-hearing items. This is a, item number three is a study session for Code Amendment Number 19-06 regarding state mandated accessory dwelling units, everyone's favorite topic. Mr. Anderson, staff report, please.
Our planning manager, Joanne Burns, will be presenting that report.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the planning commission, and also members of the public. Item before you is a study session for Code Amendment number nineteen zero six, which would add, address the state mandated accessory dwelling unit. For a bit of background to start off with, on September two thousand nineteen, the state legislature adopted Senate Bill, Senate Bills thirteen, um, thirteen, and Assembly Bills sixty-eight, six hundred seventy, and eight hundred eighty-one, which dictates that cities allow accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units with very limited standards in all residential properties. On November two, twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, um, the planning commission initiated Code Amendment nineteen zero six to address the new state mandate. And on December seventeen, two thousand nineteen, the city council adopted an urgency ordinance in compliance with the state mandated requirements due to time constraints. I'd like to start off the discussion with a discussion on junior accessory dwelling units, or J-Do's. What are junior accessory dwelling units? Uh, junior accessory dwelling units are limited to five hundred square feet. Um, there is a separate exterior entry. It is attached to the primary dwelling unit. The state allows cities to require owner occupancy for junior accessory dwelling units, meaning that if a property owner wants to construct a junior accessory dwelling unit on their property, the property owner has to reside on the lot itself, whether it's in the, um, junior accessory dwelling unit or on the primary structure. A kitchen is, is required in a junior accessory dwelling unit. However, the state allows that, it, um, allows efficiency kitchens to be acceptable. An efficiency kitchen is basically an area that has a, a place for cooking, um, a small countertop, and a, um, small bar sink, and also a few cabinets. And, and also, um, the state also allows accessory dwell, um, junior accessory dwelling units to share their bathroom with the primary dwelling unit. Um, I'll, I'll go ahead and begin a question, um, a, a question and answer with the, with the, um, planning commission, uh, for this portion of the study session. The question is basically, does the commission want to limit the junior accessory dwelling unit kitchen to just an efficiency kitchen? Or would the planning commission accept a full kitchen for the junior accessory dwelling
Who would like to ponder on that one? Commissioner Holtz?
Explain what you mean by efficiency kitchen.
An efficiency kitchen is, um, is different from a full-size kitchen, which, there is just a small countertop, a small bar sink, as opposed to a, a larger kitchen sink, uh, plug, um, outlets for, um, small appliance plug-ins, uh, and also a, um, kitchen cabinets. It, it's, it doesn't require a full-sized stove or oven, and it also does not require a full-size refrigerator.
What about a sink?
Um, it also does not require a full-size sink.
Now, just to be clear, so I'm clear too, we currently do not allow these at all?
We, we do allow junior accessory dwelling units, yes.
We do allow them?
Yes. But.
Oh, we didn't before? Yeah, that, yes, exactly. Prior to the state mandate?
The state mandates that cities allow it.
Right.
Um, however, the state gives the cities opt, an option, or property owners an option to, for junior accessory dwelling units to either require a kitchen or accept an efficiency kitchen.
All right. So let's be heard on this. What do we think?
So you're, you're asking us if we want to just make it an efficiency kitchen rather than a full kitchen?
Yes.
Is what you're at? Okay.
Basically, um, have, draft an ordinance that says, uh, junior accessory dwelling units, um, shall only be allowed in efficiency kitchen.
Well, I'll just, I, I. Go ahead.
I got a question.
So it's an efficiency kitchen, so you say small appliances. So that means that we're only going to run one-ten through there, no two-twenty?
Um, it would, it, um, I'm not su, I'm not sure as far as electrical connection is concerned. It would be up to building and safety.
Because, well, that's the reason why I ask. If you start pumping two-twenty through there, then you can have the, all the major appliances in there.
We can note that. We haven't start, we're, we're looking for ideas, so, uh, and, and direction. So if that's one thing you want us to look into, we can definitely look into that with the city attorney, because that's probably something that's a little bit over our heads, but, but now that you mention it, we can, we can look into that. One-ten instead of two-twenty.
Well, I mean, I mean, you, you said there were going to be small appliances.
Yes.
Well, small appliances run on one-ten.
Yep.
You won't need two-twenty. So I, I was just asking.
That's a good question.
But if an applicant wanted to run two-twenty, why would we care?
So.
I, I don't want to make it mandatory.
I would just ask.
Yeah, I know. I agree.
So let me, let me, uh, be clear on why we're asking this. Uh, the, the new code that the state made us adopt allows an ADU and a J-Do. So you're talking about a third unit potentially on a single-family property. That's the reason you might want to limit it, because they already have the ability. If they want an ADU, they can put an ADU in. If they already have an ADU, then it's becoming a rental facility, you know, instead of a house. So that's the reason the city might want to do it. It's up to you guys to give us direction on what you think, but that's why.
But I wanted to ask, it has to be attached to the primary dwelling?
Yes, for a junior accessory dwelling unit.
It has to be attached, okay. All right. Yeah, the reason I'm buffering back and forth is I'm looking at the next bullet. It says prohibit from containing its own bathroom.
That's a different subject.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying that same thing, same with the kitchen. Are they going to use their kitchen in the main house and stuff? So I, you know.
Well, can I?
Go ahead.
I, I think, um, for five hundred square feet, a two-hundred-and-twenty amperage is, is a lot. You can do a double oven or what have you. I mean, I don't think it's necessary they're going to jam ten people in a five-hundred-square-footage area. I'm even de, I'm even thinking, let the owner decide what it is that they want, whether it's no kitchen, put something, or not put something in there. It's just really, at the end of the day, it's a bedroom with a bathroom.
I think Jeff made a good idea of leave it up to the engineers and that, whether it should be or it shouldn't be. Because the only thing I can think of is if you had an electric, uh, uh.
A stove top or something?
Stove top.
Well, so keep in mind, um, the code's going to let them do whatever they want to. The code's not going to restrict that. It's just going to let them put in two-twenty or whatever. It's going to let them put in a full kitchen. The question, and it sounds to me like we already have our answer, but I just want to make sure we're all clear. The, the issue that we discussed about this was to see, with this code amendment, was seeing what can we do to, that we still have freedom to legislate on ADUs and J-Do's? That's, so this is one thing, we have freedom to legislate. Doesn't mean we have to, but it, and it sounds to me like the planning commission tonight is saying that they prefer just to leave that to the applicant to decide if they want to put in a full kitchen or efficiency.
And what if they want to put a electric dryer in?
Well, I, I have not been heard on this, and I'm going to tell you, uh, I, I appreciate the fact that staff did look into this and do some research, because the state, their attempt is to take all of our authority away. Okay? So this is, the way I look at it, a way for us to kind of keep some control on this. I don't want to give, I don't want to give anybody a blank piece of paper and say, just do whatever you want to do. I mean, that's not what we do. That's not our job. I mean, our job is to try and preserve and, and maintain and protect the quality of life and neighborhoods in this city. That's what we've always done, and the state kind of took it away. Okay? So, you know, I, I, my position is, I want an efficiency kitchen. Okay? It's going to be, it's like, it's like a little apartment that's going to be part of a, of a, connected to the house. That's basically what it is, like a little, like a duplex. And when you consider the fact that they can also build a, another, a, a regular freestanding ADU on the same lot. So now you're looking at three domiciles on the same lot. And this is in what is traditionally R-one zoning, am I right?
Yes.
R-one zoning is designed for one unit per lot, hence the one. Okay? Now you're taking that all away. And I think we have to exercise some, or maintain some kind of, uh, control, if you will. So that's where I'm at.
Are you basing that on, we're talking about two-twenty versus one-ten and all that?
I'm not talking about that eight-hole. I'm talking about that kitchen.
So that would be up to the, you're saying that would be up to the applicant if he wanted to put that in there?
Well, it's, it's up to the planning commission to tell us what to draft. So we're suggesting that we define what an efficiency kitchen is, and then we have, the commission has brought up the idea of the one-ten versus two-twenty, which we could add to that. Uh, it could be both, it could be one or the other, or it could be something different, or it could be nothing at all. So that, that's what boils down to.
I'd like to suggest.
Sometimes it's best just to make a motion, second, see where it goes.
Yeah, exactly. Right. Okay. I'm going to make a motion that, uh, we limit it to an efficiency kitchen and one-ten.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a mo, now we have to take a vote. We have a motion and a second. Please.
Commissioner Holtz?
No.
Commissioner Hing?
Limited electrical is a building issue, so I'm not sure even if we can limit it. But anyway, I'm okay.
Okay, what?
That's an aye, or?
I guess an aye.
An aye? Okay.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Now, uh, so it, that motion would pass, and so we will go ahead and draft that way. There's a possibility that the city attorney will tell us you can't limit the electricity. That is true, Commissioner Hing. So we'll look into that. We won't draft it and bring some back to you that the city attorney hasn't said is okay to do. And you still have a chance to discuss it. While we have Commissioner Haques at that point, you still have a chance to discuss as a group, and you can still take it out or modify it.
Right. This is, this is direction, and then it's going to come back, and, you know, we'll, you know. Anyway, so that, that motion on that item passes three to one. Okay. Moving on to the bathrooms?
The bathrooms, yes. State laws, um, currently states that the junior ADUs may share bathrooms with the primary dwelling unit, so it doesn't, um, they don't specify whether or not they have to have their own bathroom. So right now, it's just, um, understood that they can have their own bathroom, but since the state provides the option of junior ADU sharing bathrooms with the primary dwelling unit, does the commission want to prohibit junior ADUs from containing its own bathroom?
Any comments?
I, I'm, if, if the primary dwelling doesn't care, let's say it's a mother-in-law or something like that, I don't think it's our business if they, you know, if they want to share, have it so they can share the bathroom or have their own bathroom, so be it. In other words, I'm saying, don't eliminate it that they have to have their own bathroom.
What kind of square footage are we talking about on these?
Five hundred square feet.
Five hundred? That's the, five hundred square feet?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, there it is, limited. Okay. It's possible that this J-Do could be rented out?
Yes.
And they'd have to come into the main house for the bathroom?
Separate, separate exterior entry. Doesn't say anything about having a connecting entry.
They.
If they didn't have a bathroom, I think they'd have a connecting entry.
Well, yeah, if they had a bathroom, right.
Yeah.
Well, what do we think?
I, I think it's up to the owner, the primary owner, if they want to, if they want to share the bathroom, that's up to them.
Commissioner Kennedy? Put your mic on if you.
I don't know. I think that if you put a bathroom in there, it's just going to become a rental, and, um, I mean, with three, with three, like you said, we'll end up with three properties on, uh, three, three dwellings on one property. So I'm not for it.
You're not for what? Sharing?
I'm, I'm not for having a bathroom in there, so.
He's for, he's for sharing.
He's for sharing?
He's a sharing kind of a guy.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they don't, they allow sharing, but they don't have to have sharing. Is that what you're saying, Glenn?
No, we're, we're going to make a decision.
You have to have a bathroom. Is that what you're saying?
No, he's saying that they, not to have, am I reading you right?
Yes.
Okay. Not a bathroom?
No, there's no bathroom.
No bathroom.
Well, where, where are they going to go?
They're going to go to the house.
So if you think, so you think, the question is, do, do you want it to be its own separate unit, or do you want to be part of the house? So they're going to go into the house to use the restroom, so it's sort of like a mother-in-law's or a older person's unit, but they still share a bathroom with the rest of the house? That, that's what is being suggested by Commissioner Kennedy, and by staff. That's what staff is suggesting to, as an option.
I'd like to say something, kind of, I mean, if we're having a separate entry from the exterior, and if we're closing off that the five hundred square foot, like Don was saying, where are they going to go? The outhouse? I mean, that, we're creating a, a completely, you could say, a problem? I can understand that if they're sharing with one entry, then yes, they can share the bathroom. But if I'm reading it correctly, the first thing it said was five hundred square foot, the second was separate exterior entry. So if they were to choose that second exterior entry and close it off, the inside.
Although, although they have separate exterior entries, um, for, for the junior ADU in the primary dwelling unit, they are allowed to be connected, um, through, like, a, a door, a shared door. It can be kind of like a jack, it can be like a Jack and Chill, like bathroom or something, or like a, uh, an entry from the, the junior ADU to the main house.
And if they choose to lock it.
I never thought we'd sit here and talk about bathrooms.
I think we're creating an issue.
Well, it sounds like, I, I, I think you might be right, but I think that the issue is that we want to create an issue. As Commissioner Kennedy said, the concern is that you're creating a rental. If there's a way to not create a rental, the suggestion is maybe let's do that so we don't create a rental. But what I'm hearing is a two-to-two split. I would suggest maybe we, allow us to go forward and prepare, uh, language, bring it back. You have another commissioner, when it comes back, you can remove it. You can change it for, to something. Uh, it sounds like if, if, if it's three-two against it, then you just remove it. That would be simple. But at least that would allow us to move forward, because, you know, we're, if you have two-two split, I've been in that before, it's hard, you, you, everybody usually has their own idea, and it's hard to get new people to change their mind.
Uh, let's do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so regarding the, um, junior ADUs and accessory dwelling unit discussion, junior ADUs and accessory dwelling units are now allowed on the second floor. Um, exterior stairs and second-floor entry decks have privacy implications. So staff is recommend, recommending that the planning commission consider prohibiting exterior stairs, second-floor entry decks, and/or balconies for second-floor junior ADUs and ADUs. Does the commission agree with this recommendation, or does the commission, would the commission like to, um, or willing to, or is the commission willing to accept exterior staircases and second-floor entry decks for ADUs and J, um, junior ADUs?
So there's only, the stairs would be in, without the exterior, they'd only be able to go upstairs through the house?
They would have to enclose the stairs, and so it would be part of the square footage of the junior ADU and, or, or ADU, instead of being exterior and not counted toward the, the square footage of the J-. the, the square footage of the JADU and junior, and ADUs.
Okay. I'm good with that.
It's an aesthetic thing, it's not, they'd still have a separate unit, they'd still have a separate access to staircase, you just wouldn't be able to see it from the outside, it would have to be inside the walls.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
I think they ought to have exterior.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to go along with staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Now, there's, staff is saying exterior stairs?
No, staff is saying enclosed stairs.
No exterior stairs.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I would say this from a general point of view, if you think of exterior staircases, and you picture them, those are buildings built in the 60s, right? We don't do it that way anymore. If we look at the, the staircases on the new buildings that are just going up on Cameron, those are all interior staircases. I just, I think it's a, but I think it's cheaper to do it exterior, so I, I think there's, it's not really, that's not about punishing them, but it's making, it's talking about really good design. There's nothing that would restrict somebody now from having an exterior staircase to their second floor. And some people do when they have decks and stuff, but it, it really is an aesthetic design issue at the, uh, so, at any rate, I think...
Unless it's a, an immediate family member that's living there, who the hell wants strangers going through their house to go upstairs?
Yeah, you, tha- that's not what we're talking about here. Uh, the staircase would be separated from the rest of the house.
Okay, all right.
It would just be a door, you go in, you go straight up the staircase, you get to the second unit.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, all right.
So that's a separate entry that you're talking about, if you allow it, but we're thinking about not, staff is recommending not allowing it, so they cannot have a separate entry?
No, that's not incor-
Ultimately, at the end?
No, that's not, that's not correct. It has nothing to do with the entry. It's whether the staircase is exposed to the outside, or whether it's enclosed in the house. Either way, they'd have a separate entry. In the one, if it's enclosed, when they go in the door, they'd go in the ground floor, and they'd go up a staircase that's inside the building, that's separated from the rest of the house.
But once the house is built out there like this one, in, in these cases, it's existing home, so it's almost impossible to put an interior stair.
Well, you're, they'll be building a second-story addition.
Oh, we're talking about the second, okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's, they'd have to be doing, doing reconstruction to add an ADU to the second floor, 'cause it's supposed to have a separate entrance.
And it is, it was, it was two doors in the front, one went up to the second, and one went into the first floor, but they were still within the confines of the building. Yeah, and I used to live in a, in one of those.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Chairman Redholtz?
Aye. That motion passes 4-0. Next.
Another item that staff is planning on, um, revi- revising in regards to the junior ADU and ADU ordinance, is to consolidate and simplify the ADU and JADU development standards and its exceptions. The current cor- code is formatted to a fallow state law, which was adopted through several different bills. This makes the format difficult to, to follow and very confusing, so staff is, um, planning on consolidating, um, the, the JADU and the ADU development standards, and also its exception. Would the, um, planning commission be amenable to this?
The key word there is simplify. I'm good with that.
That wouldn't change any standard, it was just-
No, it just makes it-
It was an organizational thing.
Yes. I'll make a motion to, uh, do that. Is there a second? To do that, simplify it, consolidate.
I guess what is the simpl- what are we simplifying?
Turn your mic on. Uh, what, what, all you, it's the organization of the code. And we're gonna have to work with the city attorney on that, see how, how that can be done. So-
So we're not having a discussion tonight?
It really has, this is really a staff-driven thing. We, we're having lots of trouble interpreting it, because there are standards over here, and there's standards over here, and you're trying to figure out which one applies. And sometimes they're not the same. Uh, it's because there's two different legislatures, legislations, and they drafted one in here and one's here, but they didn't, those guys never talked to each other. So it has nothing to do with standards. Yeah, I'm not even sure it's something we really, it's good to talk about here, 'cause I, I, it's hard to explain unless we showed you the whole code, and showed you what the problem was. Whenever you have a code that says you do this, but then four pages later, it says these are the exceptions to doing that, well, you're just asking for confusion on everybody's part, 'cause which standards apply? You gotta keep reading, and this guy knows it's, it's, it's crazy, so. Yeah. So I think that one's simple.
All right, I made a mo- we need a motion and a second, and I'll do, okay. I made a motion, was there a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Roll call.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
And Chairman Redholtz?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Next.
Okay, um, and the next is regarding the RA, residential agriculture and R1 standards that are recommended for revisions. Because of the ADU state mandate, there have been some implications rega-, um, in the RA, um, RA and R1 development standards that staff, um, would like the planning commission to consider revising. First off, existing garages are, are allowed to be converted into ADUs now, without replacement. The West Covina Municipal Code requires four parking spaces, um, two in, two in the garage, and two uncovered for all houses constructed after January 1st, 1993. Staff is recom- um, recommending that the planning commission remove the January 1st, 1993 date, um, so that four parking spaces would be, would be, um, required for all properties, um, in the city regard, regardless of when they were built. Another recommendation is to limit house, to limit house, um, oh, well, to limit the size of a di- an addition to a home, it's worded incorrectly here, um, to limit the size of addition to a home, um, and prohibit bedroom additions to residents with no garage or non-conforming parking. If this is going to be the case, staff recommends that the planning commission come up with a, a number as far as limiting the, the, what size addition would trigger the, uh, parking conformity. Um, it, would it be 200 square feet, 300 square feet, 400 square feet, 500 square feet, or another amount that the commission would like?
Now, to help out with that discussion, right now, it's actually about 1,250. So you can't add on more than 1,250 square feet without having a conforming garage. And it might be a little smaller with the MUSE and the large addition thing, it, it might be smaller depending on the house. So it's, it's a confusing situation anyway. But back in the 90s, when they established those, what they called the mansionization standards, they decided that they didn't want people adding a lot under their house without having a s- the, the forming garage. So that's already in the code. Question today is, if someone converts their garage to an ADU, how much do you want to allow them to add on without having a garage? So technically, you know, that people could add on up to 1,200 square feet, they could have an ADU, convert their garage to an ADU, have no park, have two parking spaces in front of the garage, and then add 1,200 square feet onto their house later, as long as they met lock coverage.
I guess my question is the garage portion, according to my understanding, is that you have to live within, or close proxim- uh, proximity to a bus, train, or some type of public transportation. But it doesn't really apply to the entire city. Is that correct? So if we're removing this, then does it affect the entire city?
If you, if you're converting, um, an ADU into, um, a garage into an ADU, uh, you don't have to replace the garage, however, you may be required to replace the parking, um, but the parking can just be in a driveway. It doesn't have to be covered. It can be tandem on the driveway. And so, uh, in most of the city, most, the, the majority of the city, um, is within half a mile from a transit stop, from a bus stop.
I think when we looked at that, about maybe a quarter of the city in the southeastern portion, basically what we call south hills or east hills, that area probably is outside the range, but everywhere else in the city is within a half mile of a bus stop. The, the problem was that they, when they wrote the code, they wrote it's, the state, they wrote it so, any bus stop counts, and there's bus stops in every major street in the city.
You know, there, there's so many garages that aren't garages, or just stored full of junk. My daughter has one, and we go round and round. I say, "Garages for your car, not for just storing everything, you know, you know." So, and there's a lot of people in our city, in other cities, that have other things parked in a driveway, jet skis, whatever. And so, you know, where are they gonna find the space on the driveway to do this? Uh, I don't, I don't know. So many of, of the aprons in the garages will only take two cars, period, 'cause they're close to the street and all that, so, boy, that's a ball of wax. I don't know how you address it. 'Cause when you say you don't have to replace the garage, I don't know how you're gonna enforce where they're gonna park. They're gonna park on a street.
That's what the state did. The state's already done that. The question is, how do we react to it? I don't think any, any of us here are gonna debate that.
The only thing we can do as a city, and I wish they would, is have, like they do in Covina and all that, no overnight parking. But that's gonna, you're, you're not gonna get the, the people to agree to that.
That's, yeah, that's another issue, that's a way to, that's another way to address it, but-
Right.
That's outside the purview of the planning council.
Yes, it is. I don't, I don't know how to answer your question, then. I, I really don't.
What are the, what are the ramifications of removing that date? Are they ready? Removing the 1-1, 1993?
I don't, I don't think there's any ramifications.
The, the only thing that would, if, if you remove that date, and if somebody wants to come in to add on to their prop, um, to add on to their house, that, um, and you decide on a trigger for the conforming of the garo- for, um, to confor- um, for the parking conforming, then, then we, they would be allowed, they would be required the two, um, two parking spaces. But if, if it's not, if, if it's not removed, um, basically, the old, um, the older, the older homes, um, would not have to require, would not have to be required the four par- um, four parking spaces. So only the newer, the newer homes after 1993 would be required the four parking spaces.
It's just, it's kind of a cute thing that we, that used to happen, I don't know who I'd blame, it's probably staff's fault, I'll blame staff. Because the idea was, you don't wanna, these houses that were built, so it was probably adopted in 93, and the houses were built for that, you don't wanna put that on them, but really, in this city, how many, uh, it's hard for, how is staff gonna know when a house was built? When we're talking to people, we give them the standards. So that's, that's one of the re- it, it's not an issue right now, because it's not a standard that we discuss. We don't say, "Oh, well, you don't have to do," you know, and, and if they're building, and we're talking about new houses, we're not talking about going out and code, this isn't a code enforcement thing, this is about people coming in, asking for construction. So it's not like it's gonna affect a whole bunch of people right away. As a matter of fact, what we're talking about here is likely not to, and affect anybody for several years, 'cause they'd have to have an ADU built before they could, and then come in and do a construction on something else. And that's, we don't even have any ADUs built under the standards right now, right? We've only had a couple proposed, and it usually takes a year or more for someone to build something. So it's, we're talking about something that'll happen in the dis- in the fairly distant future, it's not something we're gonna wrestle with right now, it's probably, like I said, two to five years away. But again, it has to do with the fact that, well, I think that Commissioner Holtz worded it well, you know, how, how do we address the park, the coming, the parking crisis? So the answer might be, well, don't allow people to add on to their homes unless they comply with the parking. We can't do that with ADUs, 'cause the state took that right away from us, but we can do with any other type of addition.
And there it is, right there. You see, this is, goes back to my original point, we have to be able to, since the state is basically taking away everything else, what we still can have some control over, I think we have to exercise it.
So we're, we're, we gave you some numbers there, 200, 300, so what we're saying is, if you wanna limit how much someone can add on to their house before they have to comply, I mean, you could say any, one square foot, but I don't think you'd wanna do that, 'cause somebody might wanna be adding a bathroom or some. I think, you know, it gets, at a certain point, it gets too, kinda ridiculous. And maybe 200's ridiculous, but 200, 300, 400, 500, those are the numbers that we think might make the most sen- sense, because when you get to 1,200, it's already there. So if you start going 1,000, well, it doesn't really, it's not gonna affect very many people, 'cause most people, a lot of people do smaller additions. So I think when we, if staff first started looking at it, we thought maybe 250 or something like that would make sense, but, but we'd really like to hear what planning commission has to say.
Well, I'm going to suggest 300 square feet. A few years ago, we added on to the back of our house, 300 and, 305 or something, that's a, that's a pretty good amount. It's a pretty good amount. So I'm gonna go with, uh, 300 square feet. I'm gonna make that a motion.
Um, I'm sorry, is that 300 square feet and, and no bedroom, or three, just 300 square feet, and they can have a bedroom?
I, I would suggest maybe just make it 300 square feet.
Yeah, and let them do what they want.
Yeah.
Okay, 300 square feet. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. We have it. Any discussion? I'm hearing quiet, let's have a roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Hing? Yes, okay. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Redholtz, or Chairman Redholtz?
Aye. So that would be three in favor, and, and one, uh, other guy. Okay. And why don't we?
Actually, uh, let me move on. I'd like to ask, um, with this new standards from the state, and I guess as a city as a whole, are we trying to encourage the ADU, the JDU, or, I don't know what it's called, but are we, are we trying to prohibit it from doing this, or are we trying to help it along, or, or what?
Well, I'm not sure, we're trying, there, we're just trying to follow state law.
We're trying to fol- uh, follow state law, and at the same time, have some, some control over development standards?
But I think maybe she's, how many have we gotten so far, this submitted, you guys remember?
Five.
We've had five submitted so far this year on the new, so we're working with them. I don't think we've had any approved, because nobody's come back to us yet with the full submittal, but we're working with people, we're talking to them every day, so we're not trying to stop people from doing it, no.
So how popular is this ADU and JDU and?
Go ahead, Camilla, yeah.
Do people want it in this city, or people do not want it in our city?
Every other person that's coming to our counter is talking about ADUs. We probably get around, like, 20, 25 people a day talking physically at the counter, and we're probably getting around 30, 35 people calling in and asking us about it. It's, that's all we talk about.
Also, people are trying to not only do the ADU, but they're also trying to do the junior ADU, so they're trying to do all three, um, and it's just, you know, endless.
I think a lot of the people are, the ones that are living in the garages already, that wanna legalize it type of thing, you know?
I think that may be. We did get one application that had both, I was just looking at it today. So it's got an ADU in the back, and it's got a JDU that they're converting, the garage.
Well, you know what, people are, this has gotten a lot of press, people are aware of it. You know, I, I talk to people at, at events and things, and that's, that comes up a lot. So people are aware that this, what the state did, and they are now coming, as we just heard, 25 or 30 a day. That's a lot of inquiries, and those inquiries are gonna turn into applications. And I think we have a duty to get out in front of it, and that's what we're trying to do, is get out in front of it. So otherwise, it's gonna be, you know, we're gonna not, gonna lose control, I mean, all control.
Yeah, I concur, 'cause the people that talk to me, their, their understanding is we can do anything we want. That's their understanding. So I think we need to put something out there, whether we get to keep it, or they take it away from us, at least, kinda put a roadblock up there a little bit, to, to have some say-so. They take it away from- If they take it away from us, they take it away from us, but we, I don't think we ought to just sit there and not do anything.
I'd also like to add that some of the inquiries that we've been getting are for, for developers or investors who want to buy property in the city and build junior accessory dwelling unit and, oh, accessory dwelling units in order for them to rent the entire property to different people.
Well, I believe, one of my comments was, the entire state is now a spec market, and that is the net result of what has happened here. Now with the JDU, the owner is required, right? Is that what I understood?
That's correct.
To live in one of them.
That's correct.
In an ADU, that requirement is gone.
That's correct.
So this is why I'm saying we have to really take a look at this and protect our city, in my view.
Okay, so I think we're back to the, we'll, we'll draft it for 300 square feet if there's no garage, and we'll also draft it for 300 square feet to limit the number of parking spaces. So we'll do it for both. Okay.
The other, the other standard that we have that's affected by the ADU and JADU mandate are, is driveway width. Existing garages are allowed to be converted into accessory dwelling units without replacement. Currently, the maximum driveway width is the width of the garage plus 12 feet. So what happens if there is no garage, and the AD, the garage is converted into an ADU? What is the maximum driveway width then? We don't have an answer for that, so, and we, we, we were asked these questions at the counter a few times, and so staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt a maximum driveway width if there, if the property has no garage. The staff recommendation is a 20-foot maximum driveway width, and I have an illustration or a photograph on the comput, on the projector that shows a house without a garage with a 20-foot driveway. So basically, if a gar, if, if a, if a ha, if a property does not have a garage, they should still have a driveway so that they would, they, they can have off-street parking, so. And staff is recommending that this be limited to 20 feet in width. How does the Planning Commission feel about the 20-foot maximum requirement if they do not have a garage? The standard now is the width of the garage plus 12 feet.
What's a 12-foot garage width?
Yes, the width of the garage plus 12 feet.
I'm good with 20 feet, anybody else?
Well, we're gonna have to put something down, because if we don't, some people are just gonna pour cement over the whole front of their yard, and they're just gonna have it.
That's exactly it, so if 20-foot, then you'll have a parking lot out there.
That's right.
So that's, that's the purpose of this.
So I, I concur with the 20.
And I think 20 feet is a good number. Okay. I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye, 4-0. Moving right along, huh?
And then the, the last item is for detached accessory structures that are not ADUs. We've also, we've also received questions at the counter from property owners that do not want to construct ADUs, but they do wanna construct a detached accessory structure that's, such as a game room, rumpus room, or pool house. Right now, the code is silent on that, and the question is, is the Planning Commission, would li, would the Planning Commission consider allowing detached bonus rooms, such as game rooms or pool houses, on, on properties?
I don't have a problem with that, as long as we say no bathrooms or facilities inside the place, it has to just be a room.
Does the Planning Commission have a maximum size that they would like to limit these detached accessory structures to?
This is just the way it's described in the staff report, it's a, it's a pool house, a rumpus room, some kind of a game room.
Yes.
Something like that, that is detached.
Yes.
Okay, that they don't, at least they're coming in saying, "We don't intend to rent it."
That's correct.
And we're taking them at their solemn word.
Yeah, so one of, one of the, one of the problems with this is this gets into the old guesthouse issue that we have, which we have 1,000 guesthouses that are probably, 950 of them are actually second units that were illegally converted. So I, I, I'm a li, I'm a little bit concerned about this, but at the same time, I know we have people, and you guys know, that there are people that come in and really wanna guest how, I'm sorry, a pool house or a studio room, but maybe one way to do it is what Commissioner Holtz said, is we don't allow interior bathrooms, they could go outside, and it might be a bathroom attached, but you have to go outside into it, so that makes it harder to rent out. That's my concern. My concern is that people got the three units, now they can figure out, "Oh, I can put one of these in, and I can convert that to it, now I've got four units and no parking."
There are a lot of opportunists out there.
Yes.
That could, you know, run.
So my thought was maybe limited to 200 square feet, to a small size, and then not allow interior bathroom.
Yep, that's my thought.
And I don't, I don't see why we have to, they can't be attached to the, to the house. I thought somebody said it, it could not be attached to the house.
Oh, this is for, yes, for detached.
It's for detached only.
If it was attached to the house, it'd be an addition to the house.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have an issue, we wouldn't have a problem with that. This is for a detached structure that.
Okay, yeah, 200, I'd say 200.
All right, I'm making a motion for 200.
So, so we're talking about a, a 10 by 20 room?
Yeah. With nothing, with.
And no bathroom?
No, no interior bathroom.
No bathroom, no kitchen, no.
The bathroom would have to be, no kitchen.
No nava.
Right, yeah.
Okay, all right.
That's my motion.
I'll second, I'll second.
Second by Kennedy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 4-0.
Would the Planning Commission like to require a covenant, requiring the demolition of the structure prior to any construction of an ADU or JADU on site, unless the structure is being converted into an ADU?
I would. Otherwise, you're just gonna have, people are gonna be walking like this, trying to get in between buildings and stuff. So I would. What's the rest of you thinking on that? We're good? Good? We're good?
We're good.
Do the covenant.
The next item is establishing a maximum first-story height. Currently, this, the code has a maximum building height of 25 feet, which is for a two-story structure. However, we've, we do not have a maximum height for single-story structures, so staff is recommending that the Commission establish a 16-foot maximum first-floor building height, and at the same time, a 12-foot maximum exterior wall height for first-floor or single-story structures. The ma, the 12-foot maximum exterior wall height is basically to avoid designs that are similar to the one pictured in the projector. So basically, this structure is 16 feet in height with a 16-foot wall height. And this structure right along here is the same height as this structure, but with a 12-foot exterior wall height. So it's not as bulky, and is, it's not as massive and overpowering on the neighboring property. In, in the front yard, this can be, I guess, addressed through the design review subcommittee process, however, if this design was done at the rear of the property, or on the side of the property, that's not something that we would, we, we would be able to address through the design review subcommittee. So staff is recommending that this, the city, or the Planning Commission establish a 16-foot maximum first-floor building height and a 12-foot maximum exterior wall height as a definition of a first story, or a single-story house.
But this is for the ADU, the garage toward the front of the house?
Um, this is for all structures on the property.
So like, some people that have motorhomes that have the, the higher.
Yes.
Thing, it would be the 16-foot?
Yes, yes.
The logic here is that the code requires, only allows a one-story building in the front setback for a certain distance, and then it allows you to go up to two, two stories at a certain distance, but there's no height. So people can argue that a vaulted ceiling, well, it's one story, so, but we have a height in the rear and the side, but we never put one in the front, so we're sort of catching up, and it, and it's, this is not really about ADUs, it may apply to ADUs, but it's more about design guidelines for the, for houses, and making sure we're being consistent, and giving people the same answer every time, in terms of how high you can go in the front, front yard.
Yeah, question, I know in the past, when, before, before the ADU thing came out and all that, we didn't allow anybody to put the structures for like a, a second building in front of the house. We always made them do it behind the house. So this new thing that's coming on, has that changed that, the ADUs?
Um, yes and no, so if.
Yes and no.
So this, that's where the, that's where the confusion and exemption comes in. So if, if they are constructing an ADU that's detached, that's under 800 square feet, then they can put it in front of the house, but if it's over 800 square feet, then it has to be behind the house.
And if, and if they're converting?
And if they're converting an existing garage, or an existing structure into an accessory dwelling unit, then it can be in, anywhere where the structure is located.
You know, I'm afraid in 10 years from now, somebody's gonna look at this stuff and gonna say, "Who in the hell put this thing together?"
I predict, I predict that.
And we're gonna say Jeff and.
I'm thinking that right now.
No, I'm gonna say the state, we did what the state told us to do, and it was not going through at all.
Yeah, well, that's state, that's the state.
You can blame me, Don, though, that's fine, you can do that.
Let me answer this, though, so the state is taking away the garages and all this stuff, and, I mean, is there any way that the city can help guide it in a way that encourage them to build garage, plus the ADU? Maybe perhaps the garage, if they're putting this in the rear tuck-out somewhere, perhaps they can have a garage down there, and then maybe a little ADU on top of it, to save space?
No, I follow what you're saying. Well, first of all, we'd have to be very careful how we encourage them, because if we appear like we're trying to stop them from doing what state law allows, then they could sue us and they'll win. But, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, it's very difficult to come out, to come up with incentives as far as standards or breaks in the, in the code regarding encouraging garages if you're gonna be constructing an ADU, because the state is basically allowing the construction of ADUs regardless of whether or not it goes over floor areas, the floor area ratio, the maximum floor area ratio, the maximum lot coverage, and it also allows the setback to be as close as four feet from the side and rear. So it's, like, what, basically, this, what else can the city do in order to encourage having a garage without telling somebody that they have to build a garage, which would be against state law?
But we're not, at the same time, if we're, if we're going this way, at the same time, we're not encouraging the residents to actually try to incorporate a garage for their main house and an ADU on top, because what we're trying to tell them to do is that, okay, if you want an ADU, here's your ADU, 16 feet max, and that's all you get, no garage, okay with it. Does this make sense? Like, we're, we're, we're driving them in a, in a corner, and I, I, I think a garage is beneficial, and at least you could get two car out of the street if we can, or some, also because it has a driveway toward the back, I'm just saying toward the rear, also that driveway can actually park a few cars as well. So what I meant by encouraging is that if we're limiting ourselves to just ADU, ADU, and then they will build only ADU and no garages, after a while, like, we're having another problem, too, all these cars out in the street. But if we heighten it and try to find a way, like I said, encourage, I don't know how, okay, but I'm just saying, if we find a ways to let them say, "Hey, look, if you want an ADU, you can actually have a garage and an ADU on top of it," at least this way, they might think, "You know what, I can have a garage and I can have an ADU," versus ADU versus garage, no garage, ADU. Does this make sense? Like, you only gave them one option.
It does, it does.
Yes, um, the, the code does allow a garage with an ADU on top, but you would have to comply with the required setbacks, which is 10 feet from the side, in most cases, for the second floor, and 25 feet from the rear property line for the second floor.
Then you're gonna have a stairway from the outside?
No, not, not if we write the code right. But, but the other thing is, I think you can all understand that it's generally cheaper to convert a garage than it is to build something with a second story. So, you know, a lot of this just comes down to people are trying to do things as, as inexpensively as possible, you know, and really, I think we can say what it is, a lot of this is people, they're trying to make, the more money they make, the better, the happier they are. So if they can do it inexpensive and get the same rent as they would with a second story, why would they spend three times as much for a second story? So, but, I think you make a good point, let us, let staff, there's some ideas that we have to encourage, I think, being a good neighbor, and one of the ways to be a good neighbor is to provide parking on your property for the cars that you have. So there's some things we can talk about, but I don't think there's anything we can do to, to push or make people do anything. All we can do is put things out and say, "This would be a good idea." I think when they, when, when mostly Camelia and Renee are doing the talking to these people, I'm sure they talk about all kinds of different ways they could do it, you know, there's not just one way to do something. So that's just part of the discussion that goes forward, but I think, you know, I've been doing this long enough to know that if people wanna convert a garage, well, as Commissioner Kennedy pointed out, a lot of these people are coming in, they've already converted the garage, so they're not interested in building something else, because they've already spent the money to convert the garage, they're just trying to get that legalized, because that's much cheaper to legalize it than to build something else and tear out what they've already invested in. So it, it is a difficult thing, and I, I appreciate what you're saying.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that what we're doing currently right now, it, it might appear that we're limiting, and we'll also might create another problems, that all the cars are gonna be on the street. So if we don't plan it properly now, we might have other issues later on down the line. And, and just trying to focus on, okay, let's restrict the height, let's do this, and let's do, I'm just saying.
No, I follow you, but.
I don't have an answer, but I'm just saying if we were to.
But I think you have to understand that this, the state has done this, this isn't something the city does, the state made us do this.
Correct, the state made us do something, but at the same time, we are, are we creating another issues regarding the car, because everyone has a car, you can't practically go anywhere without a car, so that 10 by 20 has to park somewhere.
Agreed.
If there's no garage, it's gonna park on the street. If it's out, everyone's out on the street with more people living there, we're having other problems as well. So as commissioners and as staff, we also need to take that into considerations, how we can, like I said, I don't know how, encourage people, since the state is putting this upon us, we need to figure it out or find a way that may be better to take care of both issues. The car's not gonna go away, everyone's gonna have a car, everyone's gonna drive, we need to go to work to pay off the rent or the ADU, or whatever it is that we're doing. So that's not gonna go away, just because we keep limiting this and that, not we.
No.
I meant, what the state, I'm just trying to say what the state is saying and what we're trying to do tonight. So, okay, I don't have an answer, but I'm just saying that we're also creating another problem regarding the cars, I don't see.
Well, I don't think we're creating another problem, we're trying to, I don't think we're solving the problem, that's how I would state it. We're not solving the problem, because we don't have a way to solve it, doesn't mean maybe there's not a way to solve it, and I agree with you, I think we're all kinda reaching to try to figure out, how do you address what the state has done to us? What, what, what I'd recommend is let's, what, this is our attempt, or maybe it's a feeble attempt, this is our attempt to react to what the state did, and then.
But reacting to, to what the state, I, I, I get it, we have to react.
Well, we don't have to.
But also at the same time, I'll.
We can't, we don't have to react, we've already reacted to what the state required us to do. This is a reaction to try to address some.
Well, we are reacting, as we're sitting here discussing what it is that we wanted to do and not wanted to do.
Yeah, well, so this is a reaction to the reaction, so we reacted.
Okay, reaction to the reaction to reaction, but at the end result is, we still have a car issues.
Yes.
That it's gonna, we need to resolve that somehow, and hopefully, we can have a discussion and talk about it, so that we won't see this five years to 10 years down the line that when I come by, some cars, we can't.
You know, if, if, if we're honest, if we're honest with ourselves, the state wants everybody out of their car, okay? Everything that's being done, that's why everything has to be near a, a, a public transportation, has to be near a bus stop, or some type of. to be near a, a, a public transport, has to be near a bus stop or some type of trans, I mean, we've been talking about TOD for years, transit-oriented development. Everything revolves around being near some type of public transportation. This is the goal. And this is California. And I don't know, as, as, you know, generations come and go and move on, I mean, our generation, we are car people. California, especially, you know, LA area has always been, the car is it. You know, that's how you went everywhere. Other, other cities, Chicago, New York, San Francisco, they are more involved in, in subways and trains and rapid transit. That never has caught on in Southern California ever. Now, it may catch on as, you know, we come and go, maybe, but as we sit here today, it's going to be tough. But unfortunately, the state is mandating transit-oriented, everything be near some type of public transit. That's why they're, they don't care about a garage. They don't care about parking because everyone's going to be on the bus.
Agreed. I, I'm agreeing with you. I think, and I, I understand the frustration here and I think there may be some things we could do. We just need to keep thinking about it. This is what we came up with. We had two months. You know, in nine months, we might have some other ideas. And we may find other cities that we can sort of emulate too. But I would suggest doing these things now. As you guys know, we've done code amendments on ADUs the last three or four years. There's likely to be another one this year, as far as I can tell. I don't know what else they could do, but maybe they
They'll think of something.
I think, I, I believe they will.
You know, one of the other things, I hate to throw this in there, is there's a lot of people still putting their motor homes on the driveways and stuff. So when you talk about cars and all that, we're going to have to address that too.
Well, don't give the state any ideas on that one.
Yeah. Yeah. But I mean, a lot of them are illegal, but I mean, we're going to have to look at that too.
Yeah. Well, the code already doesn't allow you to do that. So that's, that, that can be addressed through code enforcement. So I think the question was, are you comfortable with legislating a 16-foot height in the front setback?
Yes. Yes.
And 12-foot exterior wall height?
Yes.
Okay.
Need a motion or is that direction?
Well, so, yes, you've given us direction. Now, there's, there's a second part to this. As you'll notice in the staff report, you'll notice there's a resolution on the last page. As we, as we thought about this, we realized, you know, most of these are not ADU things. So this is not about ADUs. This is about R1. So we would, we're going to separate out the things that are single-family and do a separate code amendment. Get the ADU one done first and then, then follow up with the R1 one quick, quickly. So the first three items, we talked about, the ADU, JDU things, those would be on their own code amendment that we've already started here. The other ones would be on a, a separate code amendment that you would initiate tonight. And that number would be 20-dash-6028. And I would need a motion and a vote on that.
Okay. Let me just say quickly that we need to, when we do this, I'm sure it's a typo, but the date says November 26, 2019.
Hold on, the reso?
Yeah.
We'll fix that.
That would need to be changed to today's date.
Yep. Yes, I see what you're talking about.
Okay. And is there a motion? Huh?
You're going to make it?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to, with the resolution number and all that stuff. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, aye? Aye? Four-oh.
I know that, that one's dragged through the mud. I don't know how to, it's, you know, it's just one of those things. We've got to drag you through the mud. We're ready, this one will go a lot quicker, I think.
The next item is, will be a lot quicker. This is a study session for code amendment number 20-dash-02, commercial standards cleanup. Mr. Anderson, is that your report?
Yes.
Please.
And basically, we talked about the commercial cleanup a couple of weeks ago and you'll see in the background, I list some items that we already discussed. I'm not going to go back through those. But when we were looking at that, we realized we missed two items on the initial, on the initial study session. We're suggesting that we modify the code so that our commercial zones require 8% landscaping and that includes manufacturing zones. And I think any of you guys who've ever been in one of manufacturing zones realizes that it's really not a goal to upkeep landscaping that's not visible from the street. So we're thinking that maybe we change that from 8% to 4% with at least 75% of that being within 50 feet of a public street. So what you're doing is you're putting the landscaping up front. You're not trying to get people to landscape, you know, 300 feet in the back of a manufacturing property. And then secondarily, we, we missed the tattooing uses. Currently, we have, we allow tattooing uses, but we restrict, we require them to be separated from residential uses or zones by 300 feet. We don't think it should be zones. We think it just should be residential uses. So we'd be suggesting getting rid of that. So if everyone's good with that?
Is everyone good with that?
Aye.
We're good with that?
Okay. Then I'll bring that, we'll be, we're working on a code amendment for that right now. And, and the previous one, we're working on the code amendment. We'll hopefully have both of those back in March. Is that what we're trying for? Get both those back in, in March to a public hearing. And that concludes staff's.
Okay. Excellent. Community Development Director's report.
You skipped the commissioners?
Oh, you know what? Yeah. I'm sorry. Boy, look at that. Commission reports and comments miscellaneous. You know what? I want to just kind of let the, the residents know that we are planning a 4th of July parade, picnic, car show and all this. There's a committee that's been formed. We've been working as a committee. We've been working with city staff to put this together. It's going to be on the, obviously, the, the day of the 4th of July. And it's going to be an opportunity to, we haven't really had anything like this for years. So it's starting to come together real well. It'll be a great opportunity to spend the day, you know, having fun with a parade and a car show and picnic and live band and all kinds of stuff at, at Cortez Park, including the pancake breakfast, which will be moved from Hearst Ranch where it's been. It's going to be over there as part of that event on July 4th morning at, at Cortez Park and near the senior center. So just letting people know to, on July 4th, before you go to fireworks somewhere, you'll have an opportunity to spend a good part of your morning and afternoon enjoying the day with your neighbors and friends here in West Covina. That's what I've got. Anybody else? Any comments? Commission?
Say it again that they're going to have this, uh, what, April?
City manager is April 30th.
30th?
State of the city is April 30th.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure we'll get notification on that. Okay. Now, Community Development Director's report.
We do have forthcoming, so we have items. We're expecting items both at the March 10th meeting and the March 24th meeting. So stay tuned for that. We've given you the subcommittee for design review minutes for the last several months for your knowledge and edification. That's all I have.
City Council action?
I don't have anything to report for City Council.
Okay.
There's an election on March 3rd, so you might want to get out and vote.
You can vote right now and remember, vote early and vote often.
And often.
Yes. All right. And nothing else on the agenda? We are adjourned. Thank you.